Steph is out of the way. It is 10:03 and I will call this meeting to order. Commissioner Watkins and I are here in the courtroom. Commissioner Shannon is on Zoom, so we have a quorum. And let's start with the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America.
Three, four, to ten, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, 2.0 is additions and revisions to the agenda. Does anybody have anything? I do not.
I don't.
Okay, let's move into 3.0, which is correspondence and public comment. Individuals wishing to address the county court may do so at this time and at other times throughout the meeting. Speakers are asked to raise your hand to be recognized by the chair. Give your name and address. Unlimited comments to three minutes. If you are dialing in on your phone, it is star six to unmute yourself. If you're here on your computer, it's the lower left-hand side of your computer screen. And as a reminder for anybody who's new here, we are very informal as we move through the agenda. If there's something that you want to comment on, ask a question or provide input on, the county court welcomes that. So if we're starting, any public comments? I do not see any. Okay, we'll move into correspondence. These are sort of related. So, well, actually, no, they're not. The first thing is just a sort of recap for you. The Cultural Trust Coalition has been meeting regularly, as you know, thanks to Miranda's hard work recruiting and getting them up and running. And so there is a, they did, they just concluded their first grant cycle. I believe you're going to do a second one, correct?
Yes, we're meeting again in February to decide what our next steps are.
Great. So there is a list of all of the entities who applied for grants and were awarded them. This is, the Cultural Trust is the one who makes the awards. So if anybody is curious about those, lots of good, interesting projects in here, so. Feel free, this is on the county court's website as part of the packet, if you want to see where those funds are going. And then stay tuned if you are in arts or cultural group, because there'll be additional funding opportunities early next year. And then the other piece is that we received a a notice from Derek Kaiser.
Denny Newell.
Oh, Denny Newell, never mind.
Resigning from the Competitive Grants Committee.
Got it. Yeah, his email address does not give away who he is. It just says AOL mail on it.
It says most of it, guys. Why is he using their email?
So commissioners, we have a fall grant cycle that was opened. It has now been closed. There are a couple of, actually quite a few applicants, I think, in there.
We're scheduled to meet next week on the 13th, Miranda, Leah and I, some remaining people.
So Miranda, Delaney, and then Leah will still be meeting and giving recommendations. And then those will come to the court for final decision, just as an FYI. But yeah, so that's the update on that piece. And then I think just as an FYI, probably early January, Delaney and I will probably be setting up a discussion with you, with you, Commissioner Shannon, and Commissioner-elect Watkins about any, if there's any changes that we want to look at making to the grant programs. Delaney has some ideas and there's some other stuff that we could also explore perhaps. So just wanted to flag that for you.
When is it? Will we do that the first meeting in January?
Well, we're, I think we'll try to, depending on how much Delaney and I can get through. Like, the first meeting is often a heavy lift in terms of all of the beginning of the year stuff. And so depending on, if we have enough time to put it together, we'll try to have that before us to at least start a discussion. Maybe not finalize it.
If the cycle doesn't open until March, we could, if we had to wait, it's not gonna matter. Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so let's move into 4.0, which is the consent agenda. Any questions about this one?
I just have a simple question on 4.4. Do you want to ask it before we approve it or pull it out?
Let's ask it and see if it needs to be pulled out.
I'm just wondering what we're approving. I mean, I see the, there's a form, or we you know, it's kind of vague on what we're approving. I get the idea, but it's just a form.
So I'll give just a very quick background of how this came about, and then maybe Delaney can dig into the details of why we're doing this. But basically, what we discovered is the county provides the radio equipment to all of our emergency responder entities. An individual who'd been assigned one of the radios, it was damaged. And so then there was a question about how we were, when we went to go into the insurance piece of that, we realized that there was maybe a gap in how, in the expectation of who was actually covering and insuring the radios. And so Delaney maybe can take it from here and give you a little bit of details. But this was a Delaney and Chris Fitz project to kind of be clear on expectations for that equipment, which is very expensive.
So this is just what you, what is in here is the draft of the agreement. So each one of these agreements will be entity-specific. And Chris is the one who has the Exhibit A that will be attached. That's the equipment for it. We just wanted to put it before you guys' approval, so you could approve the base contract. Because reading it in here, Exhibit A is subject to change probably regularly as radio equipment is switched out. So instead of having it come before the court every time the equipment is switched out, we just wanted to have this blanket agreement approved, so that way we can work with the entities to get it done. Once it goes to, if it gets approved by the court, it will then go to each of those district's boards for their board approval. We did have a meeting with them last week, I think it was, on Tuesday, to let them know that we were looking at doing this and requiring them to cover the cost for either insuring them or just paying out of pocket for damages. And there wasn't any objections from those who were at that meeting.
What we discovered is we had not put it on our insurance. And to add it to our insurance, that level would add like another $150,000 of costs to our insurance bill. And so we opted to share the cost with the districts and say we would pick up the cost of the radio if they would cover the insurance.
So we got, we've got quite a bit of this equipment that we'll have to go back to to get on the agreements.
Well, Chris has a list. She has a master list of every, I mean, you know, Chris. So she has a list of every radio and who has it. So it's just a matter, I think, of her marrying that with this agreement, basically.
Okay.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
And moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda, which consists of, consider approval of November 2nd, 2022 regular meeting minutes. Consider approval of December bills pending review. Consider approval of Conica digital copier printer maintenance agreement with bonds printing. Consider approval of intergovernmental agreement or equipment loan agreement. And consider appointment of local community health partnership advisory committee members. Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we don't have any unfinished business, so we'll go into new business, which is consider approval of Amendment Number Two to Fiscal Agreement 169508 with Oregon Health Authority. Let's see, it does not look like Holly is on there. So Delaney, do you feel comfortable covering this?
That, so we asked, Sherry reached out to Holly to ask for her to do kind of a summary of what the changes are in this fiscal agreement. And it's basically giving us the county's portion of the COVID funding that originally North Central Public Health District had received. So it's allotting those funds to now go to us. And as Holly notes in there, these funds will have very restrictive spending requirements.
And these are kind of ongoing amendments.
Yeah.
There'll be, there'll be more.
Exactly. These will probably be.
That did not get in the meeting package, you know? As far as.
It's a matter.
It's not in the meeting packet.
Yes, it is.
Oh, it is there, but the document wasn't in there, so I looked at the document before, but you can't pull it up on the meeting packet.
I see the document.
It's not online.
I can get to it.
It's not online. Well, you need to go to your email, I guess, and see it on packet that was sent to you.
I've seen it, so I know it was there.
All right. You have any other questions about it?
What's the amount?
Um. Total amount.
So it's 65,556 for contract tracing, 90,289 for OIP cares, which we'd have to dig into the OHA has a whole list of what that covers. And then there's 6,548 in ARPA. I don't know what the WF stands for, WF funding.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is this going into the county or to the health district? The health district. So we, the county will receive the fund, and then we will filter them through to the health district out there, the subcontractor for public health. But they have to follow all of this?
Yes, yes. Yeah, our subcontract with them says that they will follow all of OHA's requirements as a condition of receiving the funds, so. Other questions?
I am moved to approve Amendment Number Two to Oregon Health Authority Fiscal Agreement Number 169508 as presented.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we approve Amendment Number Two to Oregon Health Authority Fiscal Agreement Number 169508 as presented. Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, 6.2 is consider approval of Resolution Number R 2022-17, appointing a local zone manager. So just to recap, back when we formally created the red zone in early 2021, we passed a resolution that designated, and by name, said that then Chief of Staff Lisa Atkins would be the manager of the program. Basically, the manager just is the one that is receiving the initial applications, kind of processing the pieces through that are automatic, and then scheduling the rest to be before the court. For consistency, we also appointed her as the enterprise zone manager at the time. As she is obviously no longer a county employee, we need to appoint a new manager. Back on the 19th of October, we discussed this and specifically discussed appointing a county staff, county court staff position. After the meeting, we thought about it a little bit more. And one of the challenges I think that might have, if we did a similar thing where we named a specific position, is that if that were, position were to become vacant, or we were to change the way that we structured county court staffing, then we may end up without a manager again and have to go back.
Well, and the reason that it was named is we were told by, I believe, Art Fish, that we had to name someone. We couldn't just say.
That's correct.
Yeah. Well, our, we ran this by Laura Westmeyer, who is our energy council person, but also helped with this stuff. Anyway, she, she thinks that we would be able to address that by basically authorizing, say, me to appoint the person, which my intention would be to go with the court's consensus is to, is to appoint one of our staff members. Then if something happens, these two are never going anywhere, but just in case. Then that would give us the flexibility. And basically, it would just require us to send a letter to Business Oregon saying, this, this new person has been appointed. So I would be able to appoint by name, but then if something changed or the person left the position, then I would be able to appoint the new person coming in.
Having to go through all this again.
Exactly.
Okay, that makes sense.
And that, that's okay with Art and.
That's my understanding. I think as long as they, as long as the court has a process that we feel comfortable with, and we are notifying them as that person changes, or if that person changes, then I think that would suffice for what Business Oregon needs. Well, it makes more sense. Yeah.
Makes sense as long as it's for sure.
Yeah. Do you have any other questions, Mr. Shannon?
Nope.
Okay, I move to approve Resolution Number R 2022-17 as presented.
Second.
I moved and seconded that we approve Resolution Number R 2022-17 as presented. So further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, 6.3, consider approval of Gillum County Community Wildlife Protection Plan. Corey, do you want to come up and?
I can go and end up for a 10,000-foot view as you would like. In January of 2022, I was completing my Masters in Emergency Management, and I was moving back to Gillum County in July. So I reached out to Chris Fitzsimmons to see if she needed any help with any projects. And she asked me to write the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. The Community Wildfire Protection Plan is a plan that's supposed to assist the county and its communities in achieving common goals with regards to fire prevention. It's to come together, integrate priorities to reduce wildfire risk and enhance the safety and to be better prepared. And what's really important about this is that this plan makes the county much more competitive for wildfire grants. The Oregon State Office of State Fire Marshal is now its own division. It'll be its own division in July. Oregon Office of Emergency Management is now its own department. At state, it'll be its own department next July. And there's a lot of funding for community wildfire defense grants, where you are only eligible for them as a county or as a community if you have a current valid community wildfire protection plan. And in the wildfire protection plan, at the end of it, we have a list of projects that, when implemented, will reduce the potential for large wildfires throughout the county. The plan was written with Gillum County Emergency Manager, the Fire Service Coordinator, the North Gillum Fire Chief, the South Gillum Fire Chief. And then the, we had to also bring it to Oregon Department of Forestry. So the Range Land Fire Protection Specialist in the Dawls has contributed, as well as Office of State Fire Marshal, the Community Wildfire Prevention Specialist, Simone Carter. And then also, we had a Soil and Water Conservation District was able to come to our meetings. So that is the group that put this together. And the most important thing is at the end, it has a list of projects. And these projects were kind of gone through by that group that the steering committee I just described. And they have everything from develop a plan for fire prevention and putting in fuel breaks and to actually physically doing the activities such as putting fuel breaks, like in Arlington on the side where we got all, Arlington's covered in a, in a cheat grass and rye grass, so doing fire prevention there, doing fire prevention in Condon. We also put, one of the projects is a community resilience center and having the fairgrounds turn into that. And this project kind of outlines getting maybe generators or getting air filtration systems for Condon. Another project is eventually having one for Condon, for Arlington as well. But, and when we were prioritizing them amongst ourselves, Condon was the higher priority, because Fairgrounds is much closer than anything in Arlington. So we have a list of 19 projects for Condon, Arlington and Lone Rock. And those ones where if funding comes out from Fire Marshal or through any real state or federal grants, we'd be like, great, we have thought about it already. Here's our approved plan. It's on file with the state. We want to do it. The reason that we're seeking the court's signature is because this is a county-wide plan. And the requirements through FEMA for this to be an eligible plan is that the local government, the fire authority and the Oregon, and the, it's the, the federal organization in charge of fire prevention in forests. So like the five trees we have that ODF cares about. So that's why we talk, the Range Land Fire Protection Specialist, and who's in the Dawls, not the lady in John Day, because our terrain's a little different. And so that's why we're looking for the court's, and the court's signature. And the signature on it is just like, hey, we know this exists. It is not saying that, no, we sign as the court that we are going to make sure these projects happen. No, this project, the way the Fire Marshal put it in, is our list of projects is a wish list. And in it, we put absolutely everything we wanted. That way, we had a better chance at, at being more competitive for some of the grants. And there is, for the wildfire defense grants, the cycle is about every August, they're doing a new cycle with that right now. And at this point in time, it doesn't look like that one's going away anytime soon. So there's, and there's lots of equipment funding through, through lots of different ways. So it makes us more competitive. It doesn't guarantee it, but it makes us more competitive. And we can't actually even put in for grants until we have one of these approved.
So we're ready.
So we're ready.
This is important. One question I had a couple of months ago, all of these, well, basically, probably most of the people in the county at some point received a letter saying that your home is in a high-risk area for what, what if any impact is having this plan in place do with regard to some of the fire legislation that was recently passed and kind of how the state is treating like high-risk homes and, or does it not, like?
So it makes us more eligible for funding of the county as a whole. And there's also been talk that you got the state farmer. So give you a little background on that, since I work closely with Fire Marshal and that, and I also went to the Oregon Emergency Management Conference and the Oregon Planning Conference. That is a hot button topic.
Yeah, you don't say that.
And right now, that, the wildfire risk map in general is back being redone.
Yeah.
And supposedly, the timeline is that they are redoing it now, and they are going to push it out for public comment between now and March. And then March to September is a public, is public input. You look at it, you're supposed to be able to see your house or county inputs, where we look at, well, it's like, well, we have all orange, and then just like, what, red house? Like Shannon Koppick's house was red, but she was in a sea of yellow. So there was a lot of spotting, which is a function of AGIS algorithm that they just kind of blanket applied and then didn't look at it on the ground. So they're trying to do more community input with it. I don't know how that's going.
Okay.
But that is the plan. And then that they were going to have the map finalized in the fall. And then in the fall, you would also, they would also have a 90-day appeal process. So that people could say, hey, we're not this high risk. Because one thing they really like to point out is they put Condon on the state overall risk assessment. Condon is high risk, and Arlington is medium risk, because Arlington is medium, because there's I-84 and there's more entrances and exits. But when you apply local knowledge, that Condon is medium risk, and Arlington's high risk, because you're surrounded by farmland and could build better jobs on the yards around here.
Right.
So there's not as many weeks. So one of our projects in here was doing community outreach. So the way that affects it is that we can have a way to, if we need to do community outreach with that, it's like, hey, state, can you pay us to do community outreach for this new thing that you guys put in? So that's kind of how it can factor into that.
And potentially could, say, we have homeowners that are getting like, hey, you're high risk. Would there be an opportunity down the road if the county said, okay, we've got X number of households that are in this high risk on the, on the map? Would we be able to go after funds potentially to help those homeowners? If there's, you know, I'm just, I'm just wondering if there's ways to leverage the work that you've done to kind of, when the map is finalized, I'm sure there's still going to be people who are in high risk and figuring out ways to help them mitigate or whatever they need to be able to maintain insurance and other things, so.
We put in here also help establishing firewise communities. And part of establishing a firewise community would be kind of going in there and cleaning it all up and making sure that it is less likely to burn. And then I feel like there's a lot of leverage with the fact we use City of Arlington, City of Condon, City of Lone Rock. So that means that within the city, fuel reduction projects, whether it's a certain neighborhood or whether it's the city as a whole. So my personal and professional opinion is yes, we would be able to leverage it for a project like that.
Great. Questions for Corey?
Good heavens. This is great. Yeah.
You guys are going to be seeing a lot.
Very exciting, yay.
I'm writing the natural hazards mitigation plan for Gillum, Wheeler and Sherman Counties, and doing a lot of projects like that.
I know that.
I'll be running lots of meetings.
Chris Fitz was very excited. We have capacity in you.
You know, there's some concerns that the map's not going to change much. But there, we'll see when it gets here.
From my knowledge of GIS, it's not my professional specialty, but since I've been around enough people who've done it, that there's a thing called spotting, where they just apply the algorithm, and then just suddenly, there'll be one random piece in a certain area for no reason. And if they don't go through each little tax lot, tax lot by tax lot, they aren't going to fix stuff like that. And it is such a huge administrative load that I don't know how much they're going to be going into it, especially for the smaller communities.
Yeah, and it's all GIS. Nobody's going out on the ground and saying, we were wrong. GIS is wrong, this doesn't apply. So they can see it with their own eyes.
They haven't pushed out the draft yet, but once they push out, because I'm on that email list, and I probably email Simone about once or twice a week about fire stuff and emergency management in general. They haven't pushed that map out yet, and once they push it out, we are supposed to be able to put in for comment. And whether the decision is to try and have individuals in the community do it, or whether the county is interested in doing it as a whole is a little above my pay grade, but at your guidance. So, but right now, the map is not out for public comment yet. So it will be out for public comment for approximately nine months, like this.
These maps, we're dealing with fiber maps too that are not accurate, and so.
Yeah. Well, they love, they want to sit 7,000 miles away and tell us how to live. And to me, that's very aggravating. Nobody, nobody gets on the ground and really sees where.
Well, for, for me, for me, I feel like the state just noticed that we have wildfires in Oregon.
Yeah, well, that's true. That's true, too. Yeah. Well, and affected, it got a little too close to them. And it was like, oh, yeah.
When Eastern Oregon was burning, we never had maps.
The wildfire, Community Wildfire Defense Specialist Program through Fire Marshal is a new program. So Simone Carter, who I keep talking about, because I've worked with her a lot on this, has all, the position's only been about six months that it's existed. And she's already doing a lot of work, and her job is for us to be able to break concerns like that up to her. So we do have a local representative at ODF that is very involved and want.
And a direct line to her right there.
Perfect. Any other questions from the commissioners or for, even from the public? If you have questions about, Corey's a great resource.
No, I would say that's pretty impressive work, though.
Very.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
We have commissioners, we have a motion.
Lasting, I move to approve the Gillum County Community Wildfire Protection Plan as presented.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded that we approved the Gillum County Community Wildfire Protection Plan as presented. Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, 6.4 is discuss request from Pioneer Community Development Corporation for authorization of administrative funds. We have Rob here. I might have you come up a little bit closer so that Meow can pick you up and Pat can see you. Just to sort of brief recap for everybody, in case you are not familiar with this, is that Pioneer Community Development Corp., PCDC, is administering the program, the attainable housing program that the county court funded before any of the three of us were on the court. And so Rob has submitted a request. Basically, the administrative costs for the program are more than what was originally set aside. And so he's asking for some additional funds. Now I'll let you take it from there.
Yeah, I just want to make clear too is that we're asking for funds that we already actually have from the initial investment that the county made. So we're not really asking for new funds. We're asking for it to be able to use them in a different way. And really, the Gillum County General Housing Program really takes up probably 90% of what I, of what I do. And our, you know, really, our main expense is, is my salary, basically. And previously, we don't, we'd always received an annual grant from, the support grant from the county, which we haven't the last few years. So it's, expenses have gone way up. And we don't have a lot of opportunity for, to make income. We are investing in some treasury bills and things with our non- Uh, we are investing in some treasury bills and things with our non-restricted funds. Uh, which are making us some nice money right now, but the last few years, basically, there was nothing there from an interest standpoint. So we've been running pretty large um operating deficits. And I I think the program is something that we definitely want to continue. It's been, I feel very successful. Uh, to this point, even through a, you know, a pandemic situation and really high crisis and everything we've got. We've gotten a lot of things done and from your fire, uh, we can help your fire situation by demolishing. There are like homes here in Condon, which we have a grant for. And it would be really great because there, you can drive by them and see it, you know, talk about a fire hazard. There's a lot of those, a lot of those around, but uh so that's really, that's what I'm asking for. And this is for the the life of the program, which runs through uh June of ninety or twenty-five, excuse me. So it's, the funds would be used over that period. And maybe we don't, maybe we don't need to use it all. I I don't know, but um we can't continue to run the kind of operating deficit that we that we are. And I get you, and I think it's too valuable for the program and we're trying to, we've done a lot, we turn a lot to the county with the the funds that we have. And we still, as I pointed out previously, we still have nine hundred thousand dollars of that original one point two five. Even after grants and we paid the ten thousand for the uh phase one study. For the apartments at the golf course. Um, so I I feel like it's been a really good return on investment. And the new houses that are being built will provide, you know, really nice tax dollars for the county for years and years to come.
Can we write into the M O A? Having the funds to pay for the administrative costs?
Yeah, so we would need to, it it appears that the original administrative amount. May have been just discussed at the county. I mean, it was before us, so I'm not really sure how that came about.
Right.
But it was never memorialized in any of our agreements. And so we definitely, I think, at minimum, need to go back and authorize the use of those funds.
Yeah, the understanding was clearly that we could use ten percent of the funds over the life of the program, which was only a hundred twenty-five thousand.
Yeah.
Well, I didn't see that in any of the documents.
That was rescinded. I thought I saw somewhere in the packet that that they made that request and then rescinded it. Why, why did that happen?
Well, yeah, originally, not long actually after I took office, remember you and I talked about maybe doing an amendment. Um, and it ended up, at some point, I think that your board decided that they didn't want to go through with the amendment at the time. Um, though I don't know the details of that, um, other than, you know, we started the discussion and. It never came before the county court to actually formalize it.
As I recall, the board's uh presidency was the new M O U, which was written by, you know, a different attorney than the original one. Contained things that they didn't like in there.
I'm sure.
It wasn't just that, it was other things in the M O A.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think our new legal beagles were looking at the old one and pointing out places where the first attorneys missed some liability issues. And other things that weren't contained in the agreement. So.
So so I'm clear. Sitting in my dark little motel room trying to think here. You said that um. These are, you're not requesting new funds, you're just requesting funds you've already got. And yet it said that to date, you spent a hundred and twenty-three thousand of the hundred and twenty-five. I'm a little confused on all those pieces. Does that make sense?
Yes, so the hundred and twenty-five was the original assumption or agreement, ten percent of the overall fund. That was provided, which was one point two million at the time. And so they have basically spent just about all of that in the first, what, half of the program, say, roughly, little over half. Yeah, and so are looking for authorization that they can spend an additional hundred thousand. For admin costs for the remainder of the program.
And that's coming from what fund they have? I mean.
Right, that the county provided, yes, but that the the attainable housing funds, the one, original one point two million, it would be coming out of that.
Coming out of that one point two, which is probably in kind of a slow drain.
It was one point two five, actually, but so that's where the one twenty-five came from. Um.
That's what I was trying to.
No, it's just, so again, we're not asking for new dollars. We're asking for an allocation of the existing dollars that we have. And because our construction loans are are a revolving fund, that's allowed us to basically hang on to most of the money that we have. And build five or six new houses and do all the other things that we've been able to do.
But the reality is, over time, it's on a slow deplete.
Correct.
Correct.
So in order to approve this and then make it a part of the document. So that when we do see the documents again, we see that the court has agreed that that is. Can we make that happen and how do we make that happen?
Yeah, so we would have, assuming the consensus of the court is to approve it, we would have, um, we actually wouldn't take a vote today. I would go back to our legal counsel, have her draft amendment number three, because we've, it was amended once. Uh, under the previous court um to add additional programs. And then this court approved amendment two, which was increasing some of the grant amounts that the P C D.
Right.
A D C board thought was appropriate to kind of keep up with what was happening in the market. So this would just be an amendment number three. And so Lori would go back in and find, you know, most likely on this admin stuff, she would say. A new section is being added and here's what it is. Um, and then if there are any other adjustments that the court wanted to make or P C D C wanted to make. We can include those as well into one document and then that will come back for court review and approval.
So this may be a little off subject, but with everything that's out there and housing in general and how Pioneer plays into it going forward with all the issues and property. Do we need to think about doing another work session early next year and getting Leah kind of tuned up on board and talk about some of the possibilities out there? I know the port's working on their five oh one C three, see if they can become more of a active participant and and somebody to implement or administrate some of this stuff. And and I always felt like Pioneer could take on more than what they have if the board was willing and see, see what we can do going forward. There's a property we know in Arlington that um, we we talked the other day about we need to do something, quit talking about it, do something. Ideas and some conversations on, I'd like to have about how that might happen and how our entities could play into that. So just throwing that out there.
Yeah, I think, I mean, to to Pat's point, I think there is a eagerness. Of this court, certainly several people who are sitting in this room. Um, I mean, I will just lay my cards on the table, Rob, like, we really view P C D C like you are a crucial vehicle. In solving housing.
Yes.
So I want to support the admin, but I also would like to see the board being more aggressive about. I understand, like, we've seen some successes with this, but we are not keeping pace. I mean, Jed and I are constantly sitting in meetings now with pretty sizable companies who are interested in finding a place to land. And that will bring workforce that will potentially completely swamp our community. I mean, we already are having a hard time keeping up with our existing employers. I can't with a straight face go to prospective investors and say, oh, yeah, housing's not going to be an issue here. That's, I mean. This is so, such a pinch point on whether we can do all of the other things that we're trying to do in the community. And so I don't know where like your board is on. Phase two and some of the other developments, but I, I mean, we've talked about this before, but I would really like to see us think about whether we. I I'm not saying that these programs probably shouldn't remain in place, but whether we need to also look at. Whether it's you or another entity aggressively building. I just feel like at this point, we can't continue to. Wait for the private contractors to, for it to be feasible for them. Like, at some point, this becomes a community thing. And if the private sector can't solve it, like, I'm all for private sector solutions, but they're not building at a level that's going to keep up with the demand. So at some point, we are going to have to start building houses ourselves. And I just, you know, like, I. Right now, we're all looking at your organization as the one that can do it. And so I guess I'm looking for like some clarity from you and your board, like. Is that a role you're willing to do? Because if not, we need to shift and figure out where this can land. I mean, we have to be more aggressive about this.
Do we need to expand?
And I, I think.
Staffing and, you know, I mean, I, to put that entire load on you may be too much. Do you need to increase your staff? Does your?
Yeah, exactly. That's what I was going to say is that even if the they came and the board decided they needed more staffing to get this stuff to happen. We would need a proposal on what that looks like and um how to move forward um supporting. Pioneer's C D C, so we can get where we want to get, or do we need to move from do something different?
Oh, you, so you're saying that the county would would actually build, because you know the reason that private builders aren't. Aren't building is because they can't make any money.
The county doesn't need to make money. We can, we can break even or even take a slight loss and make it back in taxes.
My personal opinion would be that you probably should develop another entity uh with people who are are more versed in. In development.
A separate thing that is development as opposed to what.
Right.
P C D C is doing it.
If you, you know, if we could maintain what we're doing, that's fine. If if you want to move those dollars, that's fine as well.
I think what you're doing is very important.
But I think the reality is, is that, you know, you need somebody more qualified than than me. And I would, you know, love to see somebody a lot younger than me. Seriously, I mean, for for many reasons, just listening to this young lady talk, you know, um, we need, we need people like that. Who are, you know, really.
So why is it the Pioneer and the board wouldn't look at shoring their entity up so they could get there, however that is?
Because we don't, we don't have an interest in, we're not developers. I mean, um. What's that?
Got the wrong name then.
I thought it that way, but I see, I see your point, Rob, totally.
No.
But what your entity is doing is very important. And I I would hate to see them stop doing what they're doing because it is making a big difference. And maybe this is something totally separate from that.
Well, what um Pat mentioned as far as the port, getting a five oh one C three, you know, maybe that's an entity that. Uh, could bring on staff.
There you go.
Um, but I, I just don't, our board is not um want to get involved in. You know, we're just not really set up to do that. And I think it would make a lot more sense to, you know, create, you know, something different. I mean, even if, even if that means I'm out of a job, but the the reality is, the reality is, that's, I think, that's what needs to be done. It's kind of like a housing authority for development. Uh, you know, we don't even have, I don't think we have a section eight rental. Anywhere in the county right now, so I don't think we need a housing authority, but something like like that that's dedicated just to, you know, you building. New housing.
Yeah. Total focus.
Yeah, I mean, you just, and can get, can you get going? And that probably involves people who are closer in touch to the state and. And the board than than we are.
So for the, the golf course thing, then the development is the intention that P C D C is going to do. Phase one and phase two and then hand it back. If you guys aren't doing develop, like, how is that going to look? I know the city is eager. Catherine's in the front row. Um, like, do you sort of foresee how that project? Because that's one of those projects that, I mean, maybe isn't the low-hanging fruit, but I really think that. I I just do not see that the amount of people right now who are expressing interest in Gillum County, to me, is really promising. But I literally, when I'm sitting in these meetings, like, housing is the stumbling block that, you know. I can point to Port of Morro and they're, they're doing, you know, two hundred unit apartments and stuff to try to accommodate employers and. We're having a hard time, you know, even getting like ten together.
Well, we can't support the businesses that are there now.
Yeah, so I just, um, like, what is the, what is the vision in terms of P C D C's role on that particular project? Is that something that that we need to think about going elsewhere? If that's not going to be ultimately something the board is interested in doing? Or how, how does that, how is that sounding within your board?
Well, the original uh intent was for us to uh go do the development. And then actually build the project and create a separate uh L L C that would be owned by Pioneer to actually run. The project. And that was basically, that was based on what this company had done in other places. So it was kind of their model of Catherine at Rock. But I'd be, you know, I think that might be a a good thing to hand off to another entity. I mean, that I'm talking about, if you want to have a a development entity, this might be a good one that's already moving forward. To, you know, jump in and move it.
Okay. Questions for Rob? Catherine, do you?
I guess based on that, a follow-up, Rob, is I guess I don't want to wait six to eight more months to, for you guys to decide that. You don't want to do this project. I think your board needs to have a.
No, we're committed to do it the way that we said. I'm just saying, if you want to have a new entity, maybe it would be.
But you just said right before that, you guys, I I get this project, but it has, we've had trouble getting it for them and. And I know that Homes First, Home First might not be as quick to it. I guess what I'm asking you, but if you're not behind this project and. And that's saying this probably in the wrong words, is it's better to know that now, so I can take it to the council and say, look. They're not totally on board with this project. And what do we need to do? Let's plan A. Or if you guys are going to stick with it, great. You know, we're ready. I did actually just get an email from my lawyer about some engineering, about some excavation. And so.
Why didn't you?
Well, it had to do with he, they're looking at the, it was probably.
Go ahead.
They, where the waste pot or the sewer pipe comes into the development of the golf course is about eight hundred feet from where. They were proposing to place it. So Home First came to us a couple of weeks ago before he got sick and said, hey. Basically, can we move the development west eight hundred feet? And I was thinking, oh, so I put it out to my council at the last board meeting and they said. What would it cost for us to keep them where they're at and us pay for the difference of the pipe, just to keep them in that part of the development? So that's what we're working about. But I guess what I, my main goal is, is that. I don't know if your board is behind some of this. And if they're not, and if they have any doubts, just to relay that information to us. So if it has to be something that the city and the county were assigned to find another nonprofit that that we can do that. I mean, I'm not pushing either way. I hope you guys continue, but I also don't want to see this skull out because there's not. There's not the urgency that I think a lot of us feel like. I mean, because I was also sitting across from two school teachers the other day at a funeral. And they're retired. They're going to get, they own a house. If they hire two or three more teachers, there's no place for these people. And just to, and like what um the superintendent.
Larry.
Larry Johnson mentioned too, is how they were going to build some apartments and things like that. So I guess I just want to know what the commitment is of the board, so I can take it back to the council and say, you guys don't sweat it, it's going.
I think the thing is that there, I think some of us may be sensing that there's some hesitancy amongst your board. And I think you identified, like, there probably is, and getting into the development space. And so if that is the case, if this is. Just not a good fit, like, I think the message I would want to send back to your board is, let us know that, like, we are capable of pivoting. But I don't want to see, I don't want to. I don't want it to be like us having to drag your board kicking and screaming into a development project that they don't really feel excited about or, um, or comfortable with. If that is not their willhouse, then we need to pivot. But I think we need that clear message from them, cause it feels like it's a little bit of like, we'll do it, but we're really reluctant to do it. And then that feels like it's not gonna gel the way that it needs to do to actually produce housing.
Well, the reluctance
I got, Rob, is, um, I don't think your board is full. I'm not sure who took Peter's place, but who's, who's on there now and do you have vacancies?
Uh, your wife's gonna be on it, um,
Is that the last vacancy? Who took Peter's place?
Oh, Kim Snyder. Kim Snyder, Jeff Shaw, Nathan Hammer, uh, Mac Stinchfield.
I knew Mac and, and, of course Nathan and Jeff, but I wasn't, I didn't know Kim.
The biggest, I can tell you the biggest reluctance that the board has is the landlord piece. You know, they're not too excited about being a landlord. For a lot of different reasons. So I would be, if
We were just shutting the door.
If there's, you know, I would say, you know, the board, I think, if we want, if you wanna pivot now, I would say you're probably better off, to be honest.
Okay.
You know, um, Home First hasn't been super responsive so far, um, but imagine they've just got a lot of stuff going on like everybody else, but I think it'd be a, you know, be a good starter project for whatever else you wanna do. And if you, you know, Pioneer goes back to just, you know, doing low income rehabs, then I think we'd be okay with that as well.
Which, yeah, which has a total place in what we're trying to do, so. No, I, I really think they're two separate things.
But, you know, you, you're talking about really big projects that need, that need to get done, and that's just, that's not something that I, that I can do, and if you're gonna, you know, hire a new staff to do that, then, you know, why not either, you know, replace me and, and turn P C D C into a different thing if the board would wanna do that, or, you know, create a new county-backed um, housing that, you know, had actual experienced people that, you know, have done that. And I think Jed has mentioned that he's been involved in that sort of thing, so it's just.
Seems like a good fit for the court.
I mean, it's, it's, yeah, it's more, I think, professional than what we're, what we're doing. I mean, it's been successful and we've done a lot of different things. It's gone smoothly. I don't have, I don't have any trouble running it the way it is, as far as construction loans and doing all those types of things, but actual, you know, dirt development to build twenty, thirty units is not something that, um, I wouldn't wanna even take on. Being honest. You know, and again, I think it's we need to get some younger folks in, involved in.
In all kinds of ways. We're working on that.
But, you know, get, get people that, you know, are maybe in the middle or beginning of their careers who are really, you know, fired up to take on this kind of thing, uh, it would be, you know, and someone with, you know, a, a more specific background. You know, whether it's engineering, MBAs, or whatever, whatever you need to, to get it done, I think this the county clearly has, you know, dollars to attract people to do that.
So Commissioners, to the original question, um, I just need some direction or consensus from you all on what you would like me to see, what you would like to see brought back to you. Um, we obviously need, I think, an amendment, um, at least at minimum memorializing the dollars that have already been spent, so that's clear that that was approved. Do, in terms of the additional one hundred thousand dollars, where are you guys?
Definitely need to add that to what's being done. Yeah, we've gotta finance the administrative part, or we don't have a program, so.
Pat, thoughts?
Yeah, I, I agree. Like I said, I'd sure like to get a work session put together so we could delve into some of this stuff and do a deeper dive.
So I think the direction we're giving you is to go
Bring you back an amendment? Sherry's wa- washing her hands of all of this.
Really not, but I'm not gonna have
I'm not, because we'll see where we're at.
Yeah, so we'll bring an amendment back and, um, and then it sounds like we're looking for an additional sort of work session on housing, um, sort of related to that, actually, um, which Catherine and I can kind of talk about. We had a really promising and interesting, um, meeting last week, uh, Main Street Oregon, which is a, a state program that helps main streets all across the state, um, with all kinds of development things, and has a pilot that they're working with Kaylin on, actually at the chamber. Um, talked to us about a grant program that they have where they are very interested in second stories of historic main streets. And there is funding to be had, especially for developments on second stories that result in housing.
Yeah, well, that doesn't relate to Arlington in any way, shape, or form. Definitely does for
It does not. And so one of the things that Catherine and I I think simultaneously, the city council in Condon has been thinking that maybe they wanna look at second stories. And so Catherine and I, there's only four buildings, um, in Condon that have second stories that don't already have some, some development. So like the E S D building obviously has office space upstairs already. Um, but that would be the local, uh, the upstairs of the Roundup. Um, Bart's Building, which is right across from, uh, Two Boys, and then the M and A building. Those are the four that have empty space. So one of the things that we're beginning a discussion about is for the city to do a programs similar to their Main Street facade program where they did, um, where they provided funding for business centers on Main Street that were sort of restoring their buildings, the facades. They would do something similar for housing. We were talking about jointly funding it, the county providing funds to the city, the city administering the program. And then also actively going after these, um, Main Street Oregon grants, which are about two hundred thousand per year is what they're eligible for. And they funded, we, I've seen in Clameth, uh, Clameth Falls, they funded subsequent, like, three years in a row to Clameth Falls. So we were talking about if possibly we could help these business owners and do one a year. Um, but conservatively, if all four came online, I think we would be looking at maybe twelve to fourteen new units, uh, of housing above Main Street, um. And if you do the cost for what the county would likely spend, if we were cost sharing with the city, and then there were state dollars on top of that, um, I mean, it's still pretty expensive, but per unit, it's a lot less than some of these other projects that we're looking at, and, and possibly the other benefit of that is that for these business owners who often are struggling, um, if they're tourist driven, then they have potentially sources of income year round that allows them to stay more viable on Main Street. Is the thought process, so.
Is that the program that the Dallas, uh, Main Street used?
I don't know if they did or not. I'd have to look into it.
Several buildings there did the second level, uh, to apartments.
So we took tours, I mean, uh, above the Roundup and, uh, the local, um, just to see kind of the shape that the building's in. There's some really cool above the Roundup actually is really cool. There's exposed brick and all kinds of cool stuff that would be really neat apartments. So anyway, I just wanted to flag that for you guys, that that's something Catherine and I've been trying to figure out, and I think our next step is to meet with the four building owners to see if there's interest. And to try to gauge how much it would cost to actually get housing up in those spots, so we know sort of what we're talking about in terms of the budget ask, and if the city council is on board and sort of all of those pieces. But I just wanted to flag for you guys that I've left very energized about that particular program because I feel like it has multiple benefits to um, the Main Street, at least in Condon. To Sherry's point, not applicable to Arlington. Um, but I, I think it still might be a neat thing that would give us some initial winds and momentum, um, because especially like the Roundup, currently there are there are actually six apartments up there, um, so that building alone, you could potentially have six units come online.
Which really helps the teacher housing issue.
Who would manage the, the, uh?
Yeah, so the, the building owners would do that. Um, so they likely, I mean, I think they would probably be coming even to P C D C for some of the grants for rental. Cause they, most of these, one of the owners, um, like the local, I think Jeremy's ultimate vision is that one of the housing, uh, units would be his, so he would be moving out of his parents' kind of thing, and he would be moving upstairs. Um, but I think like the Roundup, those would all be probably rentals, um, depending on who. If any, if there's a new owner of that building at some point, I think that they probably would still be all rentals. And I can't imagine like flats living themselves upstairs, so that would probably be, the flat building for sure would probably be additional rentals.
Is that still empty up there?
I believe it is.
But I have not talked to my candidate about that, other than informally. So that's for a, a brief discussion this evening or today, but I wanna tap on to Liz's about the Main Street project too, is what we found out at the Brownfield conference is that if there's grant programs, as Jeff correctly advised, I'm completely off base. Uh, there's programs now for private entities to abate properties, meaning get rid of paint, asbestos, clean them up environmentally. There's also another grant feature on that for revitalization, but it's for low income housing. So it's a possibility. I know one of the properties, specifically the Roundup, I have been told needs to be abated. So if that's the case, and they turn it in, there might be some other funding that might tag on if they wanted it to be lower affordable income housing. Uh, the other thing we're looking at is that for possible things that might happen to the You know, those people, um, I had a resident come in and ask about that the other day, why aren't we helping them? And Rob, you might know if it comes to you. We haven't seen them in
We have gone with them many times.
We, um, they came in, I'm thinking it's probably been a year ago, and worked with a planner, and we thought we had a plan because they were concerned more about, um, what was required in a code for off-street parking, and we worked with them to alleviate that issue. And we haven't heard from them since. I kind of got the idea that they might have hit a big stumbling block. So, um, more than willing to help that out too.
No, we have, we have approached them ever since the program started five years ago. Annually, say, hey, you know, um, this was an apartment building at some point. Um, and even just, they put a lot of money into it in the last year and a half. All new windows and, uh, several other, other things, but I, I think maybe the company might have, uh, run into some tough times during pandemic, um, because they also are a developer in where they are in Rainier, that area up in there. And I think this is kind of just outside out of mind. Um, and even though we've offered them all of our programs and the fact that they could put, uh, given forty thousand dollars as a grant just for, you know, the units, plus considering, you know, rehab construction, long over three percent, and, you know, it's just silence. So, I don't, I don't understand.
And now I would understand that the forty thou- or twenty thousand dollars per unit only was for new rentals, new construction.
Correct. So this would be ten, they would get ten.
Okay, so if someone converts a house into a rental for five years, it's ten. Okay, cool.
Yeah, if you build something new as a rental, it's twenty thousand per unit. That's the change that we made back in February. No, but if we have a, an existing property, it's, it's ten thousand.
Which, okay, so I don't wanna leave Arlington out on this. The Brownfield money for affordable housing, I, my understanding that the city of Arlington purchased the, uh, old motel down there. If they had it abated and then go through that money too, there's money that they could if they leveled it and had some revitalization money in the Roundfield after that, that could be a possibility. I get it all?
Good job. So all of this to say, uh, there's some other projects coming up that I just wanted to pitch on your horizon that I found really interesting. Um, and so Catherine and I will do some due diligence on our ends and work with her council to see if there's appetite to put something like this together. But I just wanted to flag, not really for you, Sherry, maybe, um, but for Pat and for Commissioner Elect, uh, Watkins, that this is likely something that we may be discussing in the springtime about when we start getting into budget, uh, season, whether we wanna partner. And maybe we just commit and try one and see how it goes and, um, and then, uh, move from there. But, um, there's a potential there that also would mean more people living on Main Street, which may make our weekends look a little more like there's people moving around, which I think is good for the community and all types of things, so. Um, so far, we've only talked to one business owner and he was interested in talking to us about it, so. Um, more to come. Questions?
For a work session that could all fit into that conversation.
I was just gonna say, I'm sure it's been beneficial, um, as you're leaving the, the court, but I think the end of this month.
Or first January?
First of January, that if you would be more comfortable moving us, even rather than making a motion to do anything about it, if you'd be more comfortable, I don't like, you know, waiting, you know. So you're out.
Yeah, yeah, that's fun. Yeah, it really will just depend on how quickly our, um, attorney turns around amendments. So with the holidays, it'll probably, it'll probably be January.
I trust that NIMX Court's gonna do everything they can to make this happen, so.
We will.
And I will not be a part of.
Oh, I expect you to call when you think we're screwing things up.
No, I meant, uh, to, to become still involved in some other boards and be a part of it.
Tangentially related, if you're talking about wanting to involve, uh, younger people in the community and maybe developing a separate, like, county office or something for development and doing housing. Trinity McCoyn is dying to come back, and she went back in Condon in the summer, and then I think she had some issues with her son. She's back in Portland right now. But she does construction management and runs huge projects in Portland. Uh, so she is very experienced with running construction projects. This summer, she was just doing handyman stuff, cause that's what she could get. But if there were huge projects, she already has all connections. She's dying to be back in Dillon County. Um, so that's a potential. I mean, I have her, I realize this thing is very far off, but if you're looking for local resources and people who wanna be here, at Trinity McCoyn.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
Yeah, keep, keep bringing them back.
Okay, anything else on this for now? It sounds like the consensus, Rob, is that, that it's, it is authorized, but we'll, we're, we'll get all the legal documents in place probably in January. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else on housing specifically while we're here? Your work session request is duly noted, Pat. Figure it out. Um, okay, so here's the deal, Commissioners, is we have an executive session on the agenda. Um, I am not anticipating there will be any decisions. Actually, there will not be any decisions coming out of it. And so what I would like to do is go ahead and do announcements and next meeting move that up, so that anybody who wants to hear that can hear. So that anybody who wants to hear that can hear and then not have to stick around. And then we'll move into executive session. Again, there won't be any decisions coming out of executive session today. So the court's business will be wrapped up, um, after we finish this, uh, public portion. Um, so let's go into announcements and next meeting. Um, currently the court is scheduled to meet December twenty first, uh, that would be in Arlington. Um, we have a fairly light agenda, um, right now. Uh, Avangrid is asking for us to consider a pilot agreement for the Oregon Trail Solar and there's a few odds and ends. Just wanted to take your temperatures commissioners, are you feeling like you still want to hold the twenty first meeting? Or postpone until January?
I'm fine with the twenty first.
Take care of business. So it's fun.
Pat?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so we will hold the twenty first meeting. It will likely be a light agenda. Um, and let's see, Sherry, what do you got going on?
Well, um, Friday is the December Capco Board Meeting, which is usually held the last Friday of the month, but they've moved it up because of the holidays. Um, we will be, um, talking about Mr. Murdoch's retirement. Um, there are board positions going to be open on Capco, um, that would be part of our discussion. Um, there is a wildfire meeting on the thirteenth, which is next Tuesday. And on the fourteenth, there's a broadband Zoom meeting. I know that Liz and and Catherine have been deep into those discussions. It is very important to our citizens. And at five o'clock on the fourteenth is the Citizens Advisory Committee for Waste Management and that'll be held at the Brockwist Building. On Thursday, the fifteenth, Norcore is having a meeting and they are encouraging all county commissioners to come to that meeting because at that time, uh, be the, probably the last Norcore meeting for Hood River, um, our chairman Bob Benton, uh, myself and Kathy Schwartz from Wasco County. Will all be being replaced to join Sherman County's Judge DeBulskis on the Norcore Board. So they were wanting us all to come and be just to have those discussions and see what the Norcore Board looks like. And then that, that is kind of it for me, except for the twenty first, we're gonna have.
Next meeting, Pat, what you got going on? You're muted.
Sorry about that. I have that Norcore Board Meeting as a placeholder, but showing all day. What time is that meeting?
We usually start at ten, but let me see what, um, if the they've put something else out there. I'll answer that. Go ahead and continue and I'll see what I can find out about it here. Cause I don't have a time on there either.
I'm in Corvallis this week for the Noxious Weed Symposium.
Noxious, that you belong there.
We'll be attending via Zoom from Corvallis, the McKed Board Meeting this afternoon at four o'clock. Korea has their Board Meeting on Friday, which I will be attending. And then, um, I had sent an email, um, for information to the judge the other day about reaching out to Dan Dorn with Yumitella Housing Authority. And interesting enough, he did not seem to know much about what it was or how it was structured or that Gillum and Morale County were part of it. And, um, sent me a, a link to the website, which we are and so I think that, uh, we're maybe gonna have a short discussion on where we go from there to reach out and see. This might be, you know, I went, I was up in Pendleton the other day and there's a brand new huge apartment complex going in right across the street from the prison. Um, if you get on that website and look at it, they have done a number of apartment complexes in Moro- or in Yumitella County. Throughout Yumitella County over the years. So I don't know if there's something there for us, but I think we need to probably reach out to new commissioners in Morale County and see if we can't set something up and, uh, see if there's some, something that we can get from the Yumitella Housing Authority that we're a part of that would help us on our venture into housing. Well, that's where I am.
Got it. Um, let me see what I, what I have going on. So Sherry alluded to this a little bit. Um, the FCC has a map out. Um, they are, that is currently, uh, open for, uh, comment and challenge that is showing supposedly, um, that there is in fact no digital divide in Eastern Oregon whatsoever and that we all have great internet service. Thank you very much. Um, and so, uh, we are working with Senator Wyden's office, Catherine and I are, um, to figure out how to challenge those maps. And basically our understanding is the FCC should not be allowing, um, satellite provided, uh, households. They shouldn't be counting those as broadband connected and they are, which is why our map looks, uh, funny. And so, and in addition, like lots of people's addresses are wrong. Uh, there are there are dots on the map supposedly representing homes where no home exists. Um, all kinds of columns within the county. So this is just a call out, number one, that if you're interested in broadband in Gillum County, one of the low hanging fruit is to go to the website. Well, um, I think I'll ask our staff to put a link, um, onto our website so folks can find it. But go in and look at your address and see if it's accurate. Um, and if it is not, challenge it on the FCC. There's a, there's a, um, sort of tutorial YouTube video on how to challenge it. Challenge it if it is inaccurate, if it's a wrong address, if it's those kinds of things. And also consider reaching out to us, because I think we're gonna try to develop a master list. Uh, local governments, apparently the FCC may be giving us an opportunity to do sort of, um, master challenges, like here are all the problems within our county. Um, so we're talking about maybe trying to do that and having our fiber fellow look at the nine one one maps and compare them with the FCC maps. And see where there are problems. Um, so the more that we have people who know their homes and are identifying there's a problem at mine, we'll sort of make that process go by more smoothly. Um, especially if you can look in your surrounding neighborhood and see like, oh, there's no houses at the three places where it says there's awesome internet. Um, but the reason this is important, folks, like, please listen to this. These maps are gonna determine whether we are eligible for funds to expand broadband. So if we, if it says we're fully served, when we go to apply for federal and state grants, they're gonna look at us and say, nope, according to the FCC, you're fully served and we will be locked out of all of this sort of once in a generation funding. So this is why it's important, like.
But isn't that gonna be true for all rural communities? Because they all have the ability to have satellite if they want to.
Yeah.
It doesn't make any sense whatsoever.
I mean, if you look at the FCC map right now in Oregon, unless you're in the, I think, lo- lower southwest southeast corner of Malheur County, I think there's one or two little sections where it's supposedly there's no internet service. The rest of us look deep blue, which is basically the FCC's definition of we have adequate service. So go ahead, Cory.
So my question is, um, out in my neck of the woods, because I live a couple miles out of Mike Low. Everyone's got Starlink and it's amazing, but is it important for the county that those of us who are like, oh, well, I have Starlink, so I really don't care about the FCC map? Do you want all the real, real world ones to be like, hey, we don't have it so that the county can get broadband to people who can't afford Star?
Yes, exactly. Yes. Yeah, cause and the FCC is counting Starlink, which by definition it shouldn't it shouldn't be because they are really looking at more fixed. And so they're counting Starlink as fixed, even though it's obviously satellite.
And, and how long is it gonna be affordable?
Well, and they're talking about regulating Elon Musk and he's a, you know, bit of a, you know.
Loose cannon?
Loose cannon, yeah.
Ding dong.
And actually, a lot of the, the television companies, like DirecTV and those ones are trying to sue Starlink and get them to not be able to use the link anymore. Cause they're like, hey, hey, we wanted to use it ten years ago. Uh, it's most likely not gonna go through, but that is always a possibility. So a lot of the companies that didn't come up with good ideas for an after sue Starlink to stop, hey, stop it.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Yeah, I think that would be, you know, like I'm with you, like we're subscribers to Starlink. It has been a blessing over HughesNet and all of the horrific kind of satellite that we had before. But I think the concern is like, if we say, okay, we're good now, and then we let the spending pass us by and then something changes with Starlink, then all of a sudden we're back to the place where we don't have service again. And so I think the counties will ultimately, if we can access some of these funds, we would love to be able to connect every household with fiber. It, um, and so not that people should necessarily drop their Starlink subscription, but then that gives them an option to go back to a fiber based thing if Starlink ends up not being affordable or starts, you know, instituting data caps or things that right now they haven't done, but they could easily do. So, yeah, that would be definitely helpful.
But one thing on the challenge is that I noticed, because I went in, because I was gonna challenge, because our address is just it, it says, we have a fossil address, because we live on the southern tip of Gillum County. But it won't let me put fossil in Gillum County. But back to the original challenge. I think if it shows, the only way we can challenge is if we don't have it and it's showing that we do have it. So I'm not sure how people go in and challenge it, actually. But I think that's something we might find out next week, I'm hoping.
Mm-hmm.
Because it's also, I mean, it does tell us all the satellite ones that I have, that we have, but it also doesn't have T-Mobile.
Yeah, T-Mobile.
Right.
You might now. T-Mobile, I have tried to use T-Mobile in Condon now.
Well, I can say, my mom tried to do that at her house here in town. She bought T-Mobile's little internet device. She never.
T-Mobile internet.
Yeah, she never was able to get a strong enough cell signal to maintain it for an extended period of time. So it's not reliable.
Well, and it was my understanding too, T-Mobile had something within Condon, but once you wait, you can't even. So I don't know, I drive out, drive south and see if you can get it.
But we don't have T-Mobile internet. We could have T-Mobile cell service because Verizon stopped working at the ranch, so we had to try T-Mobile.
Yeah.
We use USL, you learn, it's not too bad.
Yeah.
But yeah, we need to push back really, really hard on this.
Where is the FCC's band they people have served?
So the problem is that the maps are, the maps are based on providers. So the providers are recording. That they're a meeting in part because if we're, if, if they say we're unserved or underserved, that gives us an opening to create a network that then competes and forces them to, uh, maybe reconsider what they're offering to our residents. And so they basically blanketed all these rural areas, said that we all are served. And law, and if this map goes through, will essentially lock us out of funding. Um, so.
Again, FCC's doing this seven thousand miles away, have no idea what's happening on the ground right here.
Well, again, the whole big thing is the providers are the ones that have the reporting. Who knows people who live there. So it's, it's a mess, because I actually looked at people just right outside of Condon and they're wrong.
Yeah.
They're saying they're being served too, that their polls are. And I think you get DSL, right?
I do, but if the weather is bad or it's just like, it's really, because Delaney's in that, is in the same boat and it's really not very it'll brush you and it's on the fringe of it.
So we will have on our website, Senator Wyden is, um, their staff is working on a sort of work session with staff at NTIA, which I think is the agency that is actually looking at this. Um, and so I think we just got those meeting notices from them last night. So we will get those distributed on our channels. If this is something that you care about, I suggest, again, check your own address, your neighborhood, see if it looks right. Uh, maybe consider, um, joining us for that discussion with our federal partners. Um, because this really could be a huge stumbling block to us being able to pursue our broadband initiative if we're just from the starting gate locked out of all of these funds.
Did you get any of this communication, Leah?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, and another question I have is, so would it, I mean, like, we have DSL extended. But if we go in and say, this is all we get at whatever speed.
Our speeds don't count. Our, we, our addresses would be those underserved, were reported there. But they said, we have Starlink that serves our address. So they're saying that we're technically served.
Starlink serves everything, so.
Right. Yeah, so, so what's the point?
Why is there, why should they give you out any of them?
Yeah, right.
Exactly.
So I think probably like what I'm thinking off the top of my head is that, uh, the strategy likely will be that the county itself is challenging the Starlink. And just saying like all of our rural addresses, like you should not be counting Starlink on these maps. It needs to be fixed wireless, um, and a fixed, uh, like um, either fiber or a wireless solution, but on the ground and, um, and then but that still won't solve things like wrong addresses. I mean, there are a lot of problems with the maps. They even look like our road names, major highways are like misnamed. Um, I mean, it's problematic. Um, so we'll probably be doing like a larger challenge. And so again, like if individual homeowners can like self identify, there's a problem with my map. Like still put it, there's a challenge system on FCC, so do that directly. But then also please reach out to us and Delaney can sort of keep a master list of every known problem, I think. And then once we get some direction from Wyden's office on how to issue that or how to challenge it from the county level, we can, we can submit a challenge on behalf of the entire county where, where there's problems. But it's, the deadline for challenging it is like January. Um, so we don't really have a lot of time, especially with the holidays, to collect all this data. So the more help we get from the community, the, the more efficient and effective we can be at trying to fix what's broken.
And then I will be attending on Fri- every other Friday, there's a statewide broadband action team leadership meeting. But Erin Moss has extended the invitation to Brown County too. And that meets every other Friday and they meet this Friday. And I would imagine FCC maps will be a big topic of discussion for that team and how to work with that.
This is, um, your email's just been flying the last few days.
Yeah.
And I've been glancing at it. I've got into a lot of them with detail, but boy, isn't this just really like something that Wyden and the senators and are gonna have to deal with? I mean, we, how much power are we gonna have doing anything? They, they have to realize this doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, and they do. I mean, you probably saw my, um, somewhat humorous, a little bit pointed email to Kathleen. Kathy, uh, basically just saying like, hey, great news, we solved the digital divide and we didn't even have to do anything. Um, and they are well, well aware of that. So they definitely.
It's a nationwide issue, isn't it?
Oh, I'm sure. I mean, there's no way, if you look at like Montana, Wyoming, all of those states supposedly are fully served. And I'm like, I don't know how, I mean.
End of the day, they haven't accomplished anything at all and they're still.
Yeah, they've muddied the waters, if anything, honestly, they didn't work. Um, as usual, they maybe should have started by coming to the local governments, asking us to identify where there are holes. And allowing us to then form the maps that way from the ground up, but that is not how they approached it. So.
Well, is, is Comstructure, now Ellison, are they basically doing this map so all the data they're doing, we can transfer over to the FCC?
Potentially, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I think they're, I don't know if they will, because again, like it's they're going to have to rely in part on providers as well, saying where they're servicing. And so if assuming that the providers are being transparent about who has service, then the maps will be accurate. But otherwise, we'll run into the same problem if the, if it's being overstated, the service level. It probably won't be captured on our maps, because we don't have, unless individual, again, people are coming to us and saying, I don't have that kind of service. Then we'll know there's a problem with what's being reported to us from the service providers. Um, speaking of com- of, uh, Comstructure, now Ellison, I am uh, planning on following up with them and seeing if they can come see us in January for an update on where we are with their phase one. It should, it is supposed to be wrapped up by the end of the year. And so hopefully that will give us some opportunity to discuss, um, where the holes are and then discuss what a phase two would look like and see if the court would like. um, where the holes are and then discuss what a phase two would look like and see if the court would like to move forward with that, um, what it might cost to do that. Um, again, all of this is sort of positioning the county to be able to compete for these huge amounts, like tens of millions of dollars that are coming down uh, for uh, or hundreds of millions rather for broadband um, in the coming three to five years. So um, more to come on that. Um, already talked about the housing thing. I made mention as well uh, that Avengrid uh, is going to be coming to see us uh, on the 21st. Uh, this is regarding their Oregon Trail solar project, which is just behind Montag uh, solar. Um, and uh, the potential of us uh, approving a pilot. And well, pilot is, is automatically approved, but which level? Um, basically we would be deciding whether it's 5,500 up to 7,000 per megawatt that uh, the project or uh, the developer would be paying. Um, so that we have legal counsel actually looking at a draft resolution based on a similar uh, project or request just went through Morale County. And so we have a good draft um, and our legal counsel is reviewing that. So at least you have a legal document in front of you to consider um, on the 21st. And then I think Brian um, will probably be there. Brian, are you here? Do you want to just say a word or two about what your ask is? I think he's listening into two meetings at once, so he may not be available. Um, anyway, so that is forthcoming on the 21st. And let me see if there's anything else that was pending here. Um. I forwarded you guys a letter. Um. This has been making the rounds um, about, I don't know, this is a little bit convoluted for me. Um, let me see here, let me just open it really quick. So EOC A, I think, has sent a letter um, to our federal representatives. This is regarding implementation of NOAA's and MF, in MFS biological opinion um, of national flood insure- of the National Flood Insurance Program within the state of Oregon. So I, we were asked if we would be interested in submitting a letter. I just, I did not put it as an agenda item because I wasn't sure if this is something that the commissioners have an interest in. If it is, we would bring in a letter back. Um, but if not, I just wanted to sort of flag that, that there are other letters out and about that you may have already signed. So um, thoughts on that piece?
I, I do have interest. I've sat in on a couple of his presentations and I have interest in uh, bringing that back.
Okay, you can do that.
County level. I haven't seen one individually. I usually sign their letters individually when they come through if I want to and, but I haven't seen anything um, on this one.
Okay, and I see we have.
It's definitely some overreaches that we probably ought to.
Comment on.
Come in on.
Okay, we can bring that back. Uh, Brian, did you, I see that you're up now. Um, do you want to just talk briefly about what the ask of the court will be on the 21st and kind of preview that for the commissioners? And the public? You're muted. Still muted.
How about now?
We can hear you.
Okay, great, yeah. Well, I think you covered it with, yeah, we were just coming to talk about the, the pilot for Oregon Trail and we talked about it before when we were bringing Montag Solar forward for um, you know, the red zone agreement and then decided to table that one uh, as it was an urgent. But uh, yeah, the pilot, um, we're seeking that now that the legislation is passed and in, in effect. And um, and we think it's an easier tax incentive to, for the counties to understand, the public to understand too as well. But uh, we, we've got some interest in Oregon Trail uh, and would like to lock up um, a, you know, a tax incentive and uh, to give it the, the economic boost that it needs uh, just being a smaller project and being a third of the size even uh, of Montag Solar. So that's kind of the preview and then we wanted to also, you know, talk to um, uh, the county court air on regarding some of the other initiatives that we were taking on in the county, looking for adding a local benefit um, and talk about the local benefit that we have been providing. So uh, look forward to that opportunity and thanks, thanks for the opportunity to speak right now.
Yeah, great. Um, okay, let me just see if there's anything else that I have been thinking about or done lately. Um, I think those are really the high points at this point.
The broadband meeting link is on the website now.
Okay. Staff is great, so that broadband stuff that we were talking about is already up on the website. Um, so and a link to the map. Um, so yeah, check out, uh, check it out on the county courts, on the, on Gillum County's website. Um, and other than that, I think that is it um, for the public portion. Anything else commissioners on the public portion that you might have?
No.
Okay, so um, we are going to move into an executive session. Uh, this is executive session in accordance with ORS 192.6602D to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry on labor negotiations. Again, I am, we are, we will not be coming back into and making any decisions coming out of public, out of the executive session. Um, so you are welcome to hang out in the hallway if you want to see us adjourn, but uh, you're not gonna miss anything if you move on. And um, yeah, let me go ahead and read this briefly and then we'll officially go into executive session. The Gillum County Court will now meet in executive session pursuant to ORS 192.6602D, which allows the court to meet in executive session to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry on labor negotiations. Representatives of the news media and designated staff will be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to remain in the public virtual meeting room while the court reconvenes in a private virtual meeting room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on or otherwise disclose any of the deliberations or anything said about these subjects during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in executive session. At the end of executive session, we'll return to the audience in the public virtual meeting room. Again, we are not um, planning on making any um, decisions coming out of executive session. So uh, we will just come out to adjourn. And with that, I will ask uh, yes. We will be uh, leaving now and going into an executive session room and. Session, it is 12:20 and I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting.